Recording in progress.
And minutes for June 6, 2022, to approve the motion.
Make the motion to accept the June 6, 2022, as presented.
Sorry, ma'am.
Motion seconded in discussion. Here none in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Public address to the board. This is the time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you follow and please identify yourself by name, address, or the company institution you represent. Public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion and debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair, the designated meeting, may answer your questions on procedural matters. Please be cautious and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized with a board discussion agenda, then please make that request at this time. Board chair, make grant this request. Address comments to the board chair. Please be concise. We are meeting in person, making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we'll not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you'd like to be sure of participating, please try to attend in person. I'll go ahead and check in the room depending on my wishes to address the board this evening. Stand on. Anyone on Zoom? Any hands up?
It's difficult to hear you.
You can't hear me talking.
Oh, you can't hear me? I'm sorry. Anybody wishing to address the board this evening?
I'm sorry.
Do you want to address the board on any matter?
Well, I'm here because of what's on the listing regarding the American Legion.
Okay.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Okay. We'll open it up when we get to that item. All right. Anything else? Anyone online? Okay. Great. Number six, the appointments and gratifications. Mr. Hutchinson.
We have two appointments, two appointments recommended by their respective bodies. First, Jesse Downer to the Board of Health. This is a, just until the end of the, end of the fiscal year nomination, so effective tomorrow through June 30th, 2023. She does come with the recommendation of the Chair of the Board of Health.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I make the motion to accept Jesse Downer to the Board of Health effective August 9, 2022, through June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion seconded in discussion. Here none? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Boyle.
Who is the Chair of the Board of Health?
Chair now?
Andy Tierney.
Is Andy, yeah, Andy Tierney, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, he's Chair of the Board of Health?
As well as the planning board, yes.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, just so you know, Jesse is here also. Hi, Jesse.
Hello.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for volunteering.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't see you there. I would have, I would have asked you to come forward and say a few words.
I'm good right here.
Great. Thank you, Jesse.
You're welcome.
Any further conversation or discussion? Here none in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Congratulations, Jesse, and thank you. Mr. Hutchinson, next one.
Yes, now I'll ask if Mary Tierney is here. Hello. I'm sorry. We haven't met. So Mary is, is recommended for the Conservation Commission. Maybe you'd like just to say a few words about yourself to the board?
Yeah. Can I stand here?
Yeah, or stand, come up, whatever you like. Yeah, yeah. Coming up so you can be seen is probably best.
Okay. I'm Mary Tierney. I actually live just on Lemon Ave over there. My husband and I bought our home about a year and a half ago. And I just met Cheryl Rose probably about a month ago and really wanting to get active in the community. We just had a baby boy a few months ago. And so I'm wanting to do my part to make this place a better place to live.
Great. Fantastic. Well, thank you for that meeting.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
Yes. I make the motion to appoint Mary Tierney to the Conservation Commission effective August 9, 2022, through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion seconded in discussion. Here none in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Congratulations, Mary, and thank you. Thank you for stepping up and serving.
Mary, thank you so much. I am also on the Conservation Commission, so you'll be seeing a lot of us.
Yeah, good to meet you.
Good to meet you. And thank you for doing it because we really needed somebody. Thank you.
Number seven, appointment of police detail officers and constable for September 6 election. Mr. Hutchinson.
You have in your package a memo from the town clerk explaining the new law regarding the appointment of police officers to elections. I have provided a cover memo to the town clerk's memo summarizing it and proposing a motion. In the past, the police chief has been responsible for assigning police officers to any duties. The new law requires the select board to appoint the police officers. That being the case, I thought it most prudent to appoint the most senior members of the department with, and give the police chief the authority to delegate those assignments to other officers as scheduling and availability allowed. That'll allow us to pretty much continue the way we always have, and it will fulfill the select board's new responsibility under the new law.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Any questions on the attached memos? If not, have a motion.
Sure. I move that the police chief and senior sergeant be assigned as police officers at the Dalton polling places, and that the select board delegate to the police chief with the authority to reassign those positions to other police officers according to scheduling, scheduling and availability considerations.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? Here none in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. And next is a kind of a motion to open as a license in board.
So.
Second. Motion seconded in discussion. Here none in favor?
Aye.
First up is the American Legion's Alteration of Premise Application for Alcohol License. Mr. Hutchinson.
And I will, as before, defer to our licensing specialist, our executive assistant, Alyssa Machino, to cover these items.
Okay. We have Dan Lea from a legion here. He has submitted an alteration of premise application for their annual all-alcoholic license. Like the VFW has done, they're applying to get their outdoor pavilion area included in their license, so they don't have to come all the time and get the special one-day licenses, training parties they have outside. So they have submitted that. I put in the advertisement in Eagle. I sent out some of others' notifications, and it sounds like we have some votes here who would like to speak on that. So would you like to come up, sir?
Well, I can't. I have many legs.
You can say right there. You can say in your seat if that's easier.
No. Well, my home and backyard is a hundred yards from Mayor Barkin Mall, as well as my neighbors. And the recent communication that came out brought up something about construction of a couple of buildings with women's and men's toilets and so forth. And all I could think of in terms of a place that sells liquor, my concern is what's going on happening in that backyard. I mean, my backyard in terms of what's going on over there. I'm completely confused. And, and it's very difficult to hear you people by the way back here. There's something wrong with the acoustics in this room. But anyway, I'm confused. I don't know what's going on. And I wish somebody would explain it to me.
Sure. Can you get a little closer so you can hear me? The notification that I sent out just explains what they already have down in the back area. There's no new construction to be taking place. Down in there, the outdoor pavilion in the back, they have restrooms back there, the kitchen.
Way down from the pond.
Way down, yeah. So where are you building this one?
We're not building any.
Nope. This, it would just be a permanent outdoor license. To where it already is.
It's currently there.
What part of the park will their, will their license be available to? Right near, right near the children's swings or way down?
Homewards.
It's down where the pavilion area is, by the swamp, the little pond, right?
Where we end the music.
And that's where, that's where they want to build those?
They're not going to build anything. It's going to state what it is. It's just to have a, a permanent alcohol license for outdoors.
They're not going to build an outdoor park?
No.
That's for the second letter?
I think it was a description of what is currently out there right now.
Okay.
So no, no construction will be taking place. Nothing, no addition.
So they're telling me they want an alcoholic outdoor license?
Correct. Currently, they get one-day licenses from the town manager's office to have the parties that they currently have, like on the weekends. This would be so they don't have to come get those one-day licenses. They could just have them out in the pavilion area as long as they follow all the rules.
Understood.
Okay?
Cabinines, cabinines have the license more often when you say they don't have to go get a new one. That means more parties are going to be there? Because I saw, I heard one the other night, the music and the fireworks going on.
I can't imagine it would be anymore than, I mean, in the summer, it seems to happen quite a bit.
Well, we have to regulate it out. They're, they're supposed to go and get their permit from the town office, just like we have to. And whoever puts that party on are responsible for what happens right now. This is only for, it's going to be for American Legion functions, and we would have our staff on and monitor the situation.
I need to check that. The correspondence we received gave, gave me the impression we were going to build something.
Okay. It was a.
Like a new facility.
I see. Right.
In that area, not that area, but in the building, the act behind the new, the current building.
Okay.
Okay. That was confused.
Okay.
Well, it says over here, if you tell, if you tell me they already have an alcoholic license?
They have one for inside their facility, yes.
But it's a daily one?
The one inside, they have all year long. The ones for outside, they have to come get special one-day licenses for certain events. And if this was to be approved, it would be.
I want to ask you something. Now, they have parties there and a license at indoors. Do those people take the booze outside and drink it?
They should not.
All right. So that's the problem. We have people drinking outdoors. They're going to be walking all over the place. And we have a pond there. And I see people go in there and doing stuff and throwing stuff in the brook. And that's not right. And I'm going to tell you, you serve alcohol outside, before you know it, you can have a marijuana thing there too. And I don't need that in my backyard. You put up the circuses and anything else because it's only for a couple of days. But this year is going to be every single day, every single weekend.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you guys want to say anything as well? Do you have anything for your.
Okay. So there are some concerns, but.
I guess, can you speak for the.
Yeah. Enjoy it. This is for only a legion functions only. Like I said, we rent out the pavilion, and they're supposed to come and get a permit from you for alcohol or whatever they're doing, entertainment license, if they're having music or something. And they're, they're responsible for that party down there.
And on average for a year, how many, the greatest you think a legion would have under this license?
I don't know. We never had it. We might increase our own events, which cut down on the rental of the pavilion on weekends or something.
Any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Forget this question mark. I don't want you to cut you off. Dan, does this mean that you are not, the legion's not going to be sending anybody down to the select board or the town manager to get a one-day license?
For our.
For your pavilion?
For, for our use, not, not the private use. Private use will be getting their own licenses.
But that's, I was under your pressure. That is going to stop.
No, only for our, a legion function. Say we put on like a, a beach party down there. We'll have our own staff down there. It'll be policing. We'll fence up an area so.
It is my question again. You're going to have this license. You're going to have legal, legal, legion sanctioned events there.
Right.
And you're going to be in total control of it.
Right.
And this is one, is good for the neighbors. The way the system works right now, somebody wants to rent the legion grounds, possibly like last night, the fireworks and the booze and whatever they were doing. They have to go down to the town manager or our executive assistant in charge of licensing, and they give you a one-day license, and they go and have their party. Nobody is under any kind of control. Okay? Now, the legion is going to be running every function that's down here with trained bartenders. And stop me, Dan, you're wrong.
You're right. Just, just our events.
Yeah. Tips trained bartenders. And your bartenders are going to have control of what's going on in the facility.
Right.
If it gets too out of hand, it exceeds the parameters of what you think is civil behavior, you can shut it down, right? Okay. You have that power. Now the legion doesn't have that power because the people have their own personal license they got from the town manager. It's a very poor system.
I think that's still going to stay intact though, John. Say if I, if I want to rent that space to the legion, I need to get my own permit from the town manager or my family function, family party. The legion has no control over that. But you probably do based upon the way I lease it from you. You might have some. I'm going to require a copy of the permit. Yep. And the entertainment thing that they're going to have. And then there's probably certain terms and conditions of behavior and whatnot that you can shut it down if behavior gets out of control.
Who's, who's responsible for serving for private parties? Oh, if it's a private party, there's, there's no.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, if it's one of our functions, we'll have our bar staff there.
Right. And a private.
They'll be down there.
A private party would not be selling alcohol. They would.
Well, they could. Legally, they could. The license says they can sell it. One-day liquor license that gives you the power to sell it.
And that, but that also has restrictions. So. Yeah.
Dan, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How many of the legion events do you think there are a year?
Right now, there's only like two or three.
Two or three.
But we may expand.
Wait, you're expanding. If you give us.
Just the U Plaza.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay.
So a question for the neighbors. If someone comes to me for a one-day liquor license, are there restrictions on, say, times that you would like to see in that license? Say, you know, I, I think usually functions close by 10:00 PM. I can put restrictions on that license.
That's a good point.
So if you let me know.
Well, as an example, some of the festivities that are handled currently in that area, like the convos and so forth, they have a restriction on time. By 11:00, they're down, right whenever we have the convos and so forth. So the restrictions apply from our point of view, when we try to go to sleep, you're all up right at midnight.
As far as the noise goes, it's 10 o'clock down there. And on entertainment, and it would be 10 o'clock down on the apartment.
No, that's fine. That's all right.
The only thing that I have to listen, you might not agree with me, everybody, this is going to be a lot of entertainment. It isn't just going to be one week and then two weeks nothing. This is going to be every single week if you're going to be serving booze outside.
No, this, there's nothing to worry about.
And now we're going to, and we're going to hear that noise all the time.
I think. I don't think we're looking at increasing the activity down there. It's either going to be your functions or it's going to be private function. We're not increasing the amount of functions. You understand the concerns of the neighbors. I encourage the neighbors, if there's a problem, to call the police department. Have the police department respond down there. You're aware that the neighbors have some concerns, and I think we can go from there.
And if the legion, if, if, if the neighbors find that there are too many events, and you can contact the legion, you can contact me for private events and say, we would like to have only one private event, you know, per month or, or something like that.
They just wouldn't look at that. If they want to restrict it, they just restrict who's going to go down there because they don't have to rent it out. So you don't even have to restrict the license. They'll just say, I think we're getting, I don't think we're looking at increasing the amount of activities down there. No, but I'm going to make a more acknowledgement to them when they rent it for a private use.
Yeah.
Perfect. To have a permit and what they're legally covered for. And be aware of the noise. And how they need to react. Right. Be aware of the noise. And once again, the neighbors, if it's an issue, contact the police department. If there's a noise complaint, contact the police department. They'll go down there and they'll have them quiet down and shut it down. We'll go there. I'm pretty sure the entertainment license calls for a 10 o'clock.
Yes.
So what we're doing this evening, what's in front of us tonight, is that, and I guess I'll summarize here, is an application for the legion to extend their license to cover their own private events on that property in the back. And current processes that they want to do that, they have to get a one-day license to do that because it extends that license to the current license. So we're just making an adjustment in that license coverage for the legion.
The license would also apply to private events.
Right. And so if, as they go through the process of leasing, they'll put the terms and conditions in there for the leasing on that, for that event.
Yeah, it's true. You, you needn't allow private parties to use the, the full extent of your facilities if that becomes an issue.
Go ahead, ma'am.
If they have a liquor license to serve liquor indoors, what's the big deal in getting a license and serving it outdoors? That means more people are going to be there because they're serving liquor outdoors? And more people are going to be walking around on, on the grounds, and you know where they're going to go?
It's, it's similar to, and Bono is practically from around here, similar to what we just did with the VFW because they have a pavilion on their property, but their current liquor license does not allow them to serve liquor on their pavilion on their property. And that's what's before us tonight is to basically take the license and allow the legion to use their property and be able to serve liquor on their property. I believe the conditions are you can't leave that space. You're not supposed to wander off with alcohol or anything else of that nature. I think that's covered the license that's on that property.
That's why they get the one-day license.
Right. So, so they're not allowed to walk amongst the property.
I'll tell you something. We've had functions at the American Legion, any function there, and you'll see, in my backyard, I can see people walking in where the creek is, and they're relaxing and throwing stuff in there, and they're doing all their, and, and I can see it from my kitchen window and from my desk.
Okay.
And if you get all these people walking around drinking booze, they're not going to stay there. They're going to walk around and look around. And it's not going to be safe.
The application is perhaps ambiguous on this because it refers to the whole property. So you're asking that the whole property be the licensed premises?
Right. If we had some kind of function, like a volleyball tournament or something, and we have it out in the field, and we want to set up a portable bar out there.
Okay. So, so, so it's actually not ambiguous. It's, because you start talking about the whole property, then you, then you talk about the buildings. So it really is the whole property that you're.
And here's the thing with that, using the example of the volleyball, you just have to come get a one-day license for it anyway. This is just saying that we're okay for the year, saving them the stuff of coming in.
Yes.
And the private parties still have to come in and get their one-day license. Yes.
And you can make whatever policies you want about private parties based on neighbors' concerns.
I think we're going to have a little more type of restriction to that. I think that'd be a good idea concerning the concerns.
And, and if the vote is to move forward and approve this, then certainly the residents have, you know, this is an open forum. So if there's any complaints, bring them forward, you know, through Alyssa, then to the board, then we'll take it from there. Okay.
Any further questions from the audience? Anybody online that want to speak on this? If it's none, is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve the American Legion's operation of premise application for alcohol license.
Second.
So there's a motion to approve the license before us. Is there a second? Any discussion, further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Boyle.
I think the way liquor license goes, it has to state right on the license, the exact location down to rooms, an area that alcoholic beverages are going to be served. Now, of course, you have, the legion now has its bar inside, right? And in theory, you're going to have this space at the pavilion, and there will be certain areas where people can sit and certain areas where they can purchase alcoholic beverages. I don't think you can take that license and roam all over the property, set up portable bars, without it passing muster with this board and being articulated on the license and made, and the ABC is watching, approving it. I think what we're after here is to have the license that covers the bar in the building and upstairs, and you're looking for an extension of that license for an area of the pavilion.
That, that is what I was just trying to clarify.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, John, I don't think it covers the whole, whatever is there, five or six acres.
Under description of premises, it states the whole property. And that, that.
I think you're going to run into problems with, with the ABC with that right off the bat.
I'll say, so I'll disagree with that.
Okay.
The Crown Plaza, or whatever it's called today, I don't think they have liquor licenses for each room that they're selling, or they have their bars out there, mini bars, or the restaurants, or the grand ballroom, or the different meeting rooms, or the restaurants downstairs. I think it's liquor license that covers the property.
Well, Mark, I would differ with you. I'm certain the Crown Plaza has what's known as an innkeeper's license, now an on-premise license, which allows specifically then to serve alcohol and deliver it to certain rooms and certain areas of the property. It's not the same license. I would guess. I don't.
We'd have to see their license. But my understanding, based on the clarification I just got, is that this is for the entire premises, so that someone could walk from the pavilion to the main building with a glass of beer.
Well, that shouldn't happen. That, that's not what the VFW, when they were just in here going through the same thing. They're going to have, you're in the pavilion, you get a drink, you stay there. If you're inside the building at the bar, you can't walk out of the building with a drink. I don't think you can roam all over the property or set up portable bars without the approval of this board and the ABCC.
It's my understanding that that is the intent of this application. Can we?
I guess I have a question on that, then, because this is getting some clarification on, how is the legion going to control alcohol, consuming alcohol for those that have been maybe turned off or shut down due to intoxication, but yet they're still on the property?
It would be, yes, to leave it, right? And on the volleyball thing, we would have that area fenced off, so we know if somebody, you know, say we shut somebody off, they're off, they're off the property. Somebody's going to ask for one of the property.
So you're really asking for flexibility.
Yeah. We just want to use our property.
It would be very useful to have a statement from you saying that there will be limited areas that alcohol is going to be for sale.
I think it's sitting here somewhere that.
Or be, be able to be consumed, so that we're very clear on what your policy is on this. That would also help us address any complaints that arose.
May I just make a comment? The VFW's alteration of license premises back on for reconsideration because the ABCC sent it back. for reconsideration because the ABCC sent it back. Um, I, I agree with what you're saying. I don't think they're going to allow the whole 27 acres to just be covered under the alcohol license. Um, we kind of reworked the VFWs to just be their pavilion area. And just that alone, the ABCC wants it roped off. They wanna know how it's gonna be controlled. They wanna make sure it's not going into the parking lot. And I have, I do have concerns that this is gonna be sent back with the whole entire property wanting to be included. So on that, the top form of the licensing authority that you guys sign off on, I don't know, Dan, if you wanna try to just get the pavilion area. And for anything else, come for the one-day licenses. Anything they have in the field, I think you're gonna have better chances of the state approving it if you stick with the pavilion area.
Okay, I'll do that.
And we do that?
Well, that's good insight. That's helpful up at the VFW.
The woman in the ABCC made it very clear that they're not really giving out a whole bunch of outdoor licenses at the current moment. So we'll see what happens with theirs, but...
Is the Legion amendable to that amendment to the license?
Yeah.
Okay. How about, I think we still have the, the concerns about the volume things that, so if there are complaints or are issues, definitely, um, connect with the Dalton PD if there are issues happening at that moment. And then we'll certainly hear all of those complaints as well.
I have one question. Um, where does the Legion property end? At the Brook?
I don't know.
I believe we own on the other side of that Brook.
They own on the other side. To our property, uh, okay. Well, they got a big log that fell across the Brook. And the kids are coming over and going across that log and coming into the, you know, into our property. And when are they gonna take that log out of there?
So how do we amend this, Alyssa? Just take a vote on amendment in that description?
Yeah. And I can add the description under the additional remarks there, so...
Any further discussion on that?
You gotta really be specific. I think to get anywhere with this would be, right?
Yes.
So somebody's gotta say, "Well, we know what the description of the existing, uh, property is inside the bar." Sorry, out of license. It's the bar area upstairs for a party room. Over here, uh, Dot, uh, Dan, excuse me. What exactly do you have in mind at the pavilion? Obviously, you're going to have a bar area, and you're going to have a, uh, uh, restaurant, male and female. What else are you gonna have? Are you going to have an area with picnic tables where people can sit?
We got the canopy area, the kitchen.
Oh, you're not gonna, okay. Where people are gonna gather, it's gonna be in the canopy area, right?
Oh, yeah. I would imagine. People wanna be outside. This will...
Yeah. Okay, wait, I'm trying to get this straight, so she can put it in an amendment form, so you can get, I'm not trying to badger you.
Well, there's a building there. It's got a kitchen, ladies' bedroom, a storage area, a garage, and a canopy.
Okay. But where, where people are gonna drink is going to be in the canopy area?
Or on a lawn.
Or on lawn, okay. So we amend the application to read that alcoholic beverages will be served in pavilion area and the adjoining canopy area and lawn. Is that suitable? Got the Alicia?
Probably served and consumed.
And consumed.
Yeah, I think it would work if you just took the first sentence out, talking about the whole property consists of 27 acres. Cause they're not, they're not looking for a description of the whole property. They're looking for a description of where, where you're going to be.
Where you're gonna serve and consume.
Serving and drinking.
They have to, the drink that they buy, they have to be consumed, consumed in that area.
That, that's, that's what I'm hearing about people wandering about.
How they're gonna keep them there.
That sort of thing.
Well, we, the Legion, you had to start off, you have to start off with a certain amount of trust that the Legion will do, be organized and in charge and the authority and on-premise, and, uh, will run the operation as they run their buil, the building, bar, and, uh, party room in conjunction with the law.
There's no fence around that area. Is there a fence around that area?
There is a fence all the way up the road, down East Street. There's a fence all the way up.
But I always thought, I went, there was always a fence around the entire area. Is that right?
Well, there's a broken, that is a fence.
So, so the alcohol will be served and consumed on the pavilion, in the canopy, and then a few picnic tables in the grass area. But, and that would be, that would be the limitation. So if, if, if the tenants are roaming around the property drinking alcohol, that'd be a violation of the license.
That's what they get right to.
Okay. Everybody, we all see? Okay.
I, I'd also like to suggest that the map could be clearer as, I, I think everything on the map is supposed to be the areas in which alcohol will be served and consumed. And, um...
Well, kitchen area is an open area, so we can set the bar up in there on a rainy day or something.
Which is, which is fine. And then, then there's, there's, there's storage here as well. So some way to determine.
Well, I gotta use the storage area for...
And then, um, so some way to determine from this map, this is what you're asking the premises to.
So it'd be the kitchen, possibly the garage, and the canopy alone.
Uh, right. Uh, and, and so the pavilion area is what's, is the entirety of that? Uh, okay. Because you also want to include your main building in the premises, because this is...
I did. Well, the main building is included in there.
In the description, but not in the map. I think you want everything on the map that is going to be the premises where you sell and consume alcohol. So...
Totally right. And then, when this gets approved, and this might even be altered or not allowed by the ABCC, oh, she has to prepare the license. She has to type that in where it says premises right at the top of the license. Premises where alcohol will be sold and consumed.
And that's taken from the description on the first page of the application.
Do any residents like to see the map at all, just out of curiosity, if anyone?
I'll bring it to you.
Yeah, this is, the map is what would be added to your existing premises, but it's not the whole premises. So, so what they're asking for, the map should, should reflect what's on the front, the complete description of the licensed premises. So it should include your main building and the outbuildings and lawn. If, if the lawn is going to be...
This is all here already.
Included.
This is, this is...
Yeah. We can, we can, we can work with you on that.
Is it just, just basically update the license?
And update these buildings?
No, these are buildings as they are. And is the license just given the ability to sell and have, um...
I don't, I don't approve liquor outdoors. And the other thing is gonna be this entertainment license. That means they're gonna have entertainment every single weekend.
All right. So we have a, a motion to approve through...
I might say one other thing. If noise seems to be a problem, one of the things you can do is ask the town, because of entertainment, you can ask the town manager, when he's approving a one-day or private license for those premises, to, uh, not allow, um, uh, I lost the word, amplified music. Um, so, you know, I, that's kind of to the Legion who are supervising these private people getting their licenses. But if you don't think the license, the type of, uh, entertainment they're gonna have is appropriate, you can ask the town manager to restrict it to non-amplified music. It's up to him to evaluate the circumstances and...
And one of the good things about taking it this process is that we have engagement in this conversation. If this was always a one-day license request, we wouldn't have this type of level of engagement. So basically go through the process and it'll just, you know, go through this. So now you have this level of engagement. You set a, a clear, a clearer set of expectations and nice neighborly kind of understanding. And, and then if that's followed through, then that's great. And if not, then we come back here and have a different discussion. But we have a very clear license process. And if that gets violated, then we reel it back in, if you will. Does that make sense? So we're really just trying to make it easier for the Legion to manage their privates, their own events. All right?
Excuse me.
Sure.
If we have some difficulty with the noise level, as you pointed out, all right, right now, sometimes the music's fine. Sometimes it's not that good. But anyway, if we have difficulty with the sound levels and whatever's going on, you're indicating we should go to the town manager to get it fixed? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Well, your, your first stop is the police.
I'm sorry?
Your first stop is the police.
The police.
For an immediate problem.
They're gonna get any license.
Yeah.
They want the music, they're gonna have the music. If they have alcohol and then entertainment, there's gonna be something there every single weekend.
Like, ma'am, you don't, you don't know that for sure.
And, and, and again, the, um, we, we, we're happy to work on the hours. You know, if you find, you know, things going past 10, or even at, even if it's too loud before then, let me know, and I can adjust going forward. Yeah?
So what, what, um, so your first course, if I were living where you're living, if the noise is too loud...
You don't know where my, my...
I don't, yeah.
This is where it is. My backyard is, I own, we own property into the Brook.
Okay.
Right near the kids swing, you know, where the kids swing?
Yep, yep.
That's where our property ends, right there. So I see a lot of people, when you have functions at the American Legion, they come there and they go into the Brook. They throw things, they make love, they do everything. And I put up with it because I know it's only for three or four days if they're having a circus, or if they have some function for the children and all that. But this thing here is gonna be every single weekend.
Have you, have you spoken to the people at the Legion? Have you complained to them?
Pardon me?
Have you complained to the people?
No, because I said the function that we've had has only been two or three days of, or, or not even a week, and we put up with it.
So if you have a complaint, you gotta at least give them the opportunity to drive that.
We have told, we have told the dog police about the kids come in there, and they didn't do anything about it.
So we have a...
When they have the carnivals, when they have the carnivals and, and everything else, we know it's only temporary for a few days, and we put up with the noise, the fireworks, everything. Cause our backyard and my, my kitchen, my living room is right there. And I can see what goes on there at the American Legion. Not now because of the bald leaves. But we hear the sun, and the people that come in and walk to the Brook.
May I ask you just a follow-up question on that? Are those the younger generation kids who are doing, having that, doing that activity versus the adults who are 21 plus?
It's younger people.
It's younger people. So it's not the, it's not the American Legion, um, um, consumers or, or members or anything else of that nature?
I can't, as far as I can see.
I can't, I can't tell you. Because there are a lot of them. Even, even adult people go deal with the kids swing, you know, that thing goes around there. You see all kinds of people, not just children.
Sure. So we have a motion to approve, and then through discussion, we landed on a, a amendment, um, so we can amend that motion, I guess, Mr. Boyle, Mr. Mitchell.
Did we amend it yet?
Sorry?
Where are we? Did we amend the initial, is there been an initial motion to approve?
There's been an initial motion to approve.
Did we have a amendment and did we vote to amend it yet?
Not yet, that's what we're about to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, I've, I've heard two things so far. One is, um, you know, here, here's the area, you know, there's, there's the area included in the map in the application. That includes a lawn, which is outdoors, and we've heard the desire to set something up, a, a table next to, say, a volleyball court. Um, but that is outside service, which we've heard an objection to. Um, we, we do have all of the buildings laid out in the description of, of premises here. Uh, so I think that whatever amendment there is, is to limit the premises to either the buildings as described in the current application, or the buildings and field as described in the current...
I'm beginning to lean towards to reject the application until it's cleaned up.
Yeah, it, it would be, it's a little difficult to do something on the fly like this.
That's, that's, I, I, that's kind of where my head's at, at the moment, but I defer to the board.
I knew what you said immediately, Joe.
Is to, uh, just not approve the application until it's cleaned up?
Well, I'll, I'll table it.
Table it?
Yeah, until, to a date certain.
Whether it's next meeting, next...
September 12th.
September 12th.
And in the meantime, I think Alicia gets it drifting what we were talking about here. I think you're gonna have to work with Dan. Dan. You're gonna have to work with Alicia and get this application straightened out. All right?
So is that a motion, Mr. Boyle, to table it until September 12th?
I'll make it. So will.
Is there a second? Second. Okay. So is the motion, a second, to table it until our next meeting, September 12th? Any discussion on table? Um, all in favor? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Mr. Schott?
No.
Uh, so, motion carries. All right. Um, thank you everybody for engaging in that and, um, that conversation. American Legion's entertainment license. I think that's, um...
So that's to include the outdoors as well until 10:00 PM, at the latest?
Well, I think we would have to table this because we would have to approve the initial issue first before we can allow auxiliary issue to be part of the package.
All right. So is a motion to table?
Yes, that's a motion.
Okay.
George, you heard.
Is there a second? That's what, you want a second on that?
Take it.
Okay. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? All right. Motion carries. We table that to the front. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And then the next one is the VFW's alteration of premise application for alcohol license reconsideration. Alyssa?
Okay. Uh, yeah, like what was just discussed, the VFW, they had previously approved their alteration of the license premise. Um, the ABCC came back with some technical things. Um, the name on the D's didn't match, um, the license name, so we had to rework that a little bit. Um, they had to provide an affidavit on how they were able to control their outdoor license premise. Um, he is not able to be here today, but Jeff Ross and I went through this, uh, very carefully, sent it back to the investigator. Um, it seems like it's okay now. They are going to be roping off their pavilion area. They will always be having a tip served by bartender out there to make sure the drinking stays within the roped-off area.
Okay. So this has the ABC kind of consulted with insights?
Yes.
Okay. And we've already approved this once, and so this is just a reconsideration?
Reconsider.
Okay. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion carries. That's a good model to use for the prior conversation. So is there a motion to, um, see closed as a license in board? All right. Motion second. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? Motion carries. We're to close as a license in board. Uh, motion to open as sewer commission.
So will.
Is there a second? Motion second. Any discussion? Hear none. We're now opening the sewer commission to approve new sewer rates. Mr. Schott?
Uh, yes, we have a number of options for you here. Uh, if I can walk you through the handout that has FY '22 sewer, actual FY '23 estimate on the top of it, uh, you'll see that... you'll see that the FY '22 actuals are considerably lower than the FY, than any of the FY '23 estimate increases. If we use the current rate, which is the second column from the left, you see in the bottom, the sewer fund would be in deficit almost $172,000. So it's clear that there has to be an increase. And this is due to the expense, the intergovernmental expense, the Pittsfield water treatment. This is actually the first year, I think, in a while that we've gotten a hard estimate from the city. And that's great. The problem being that the estimate is a lot of money. It's, you know, $230,000 roughly. So that's a substantial increase, and that's what's leading to, if we kept the same rate, there would be the $172,000 deficit. So the next is the case of, well, if we had a 15% increase, there would still be a $2,000 deficit. So that's kind of a round figure, 15%, $2,000 deficit. Even that would be raising, if you look at the second line of numbers down, the annual, it should be flat rate, that rises from $394 to $454. Even that $60 increase for the annual flat rate does not get us up to even being in the black. So we've calculated three more percentage increases. A 16% increase, which is $4 more in the annual flat rate for a household. A 17% increase would be $6 more in the annual flat rate per household. And the 18% increase would be $10 more for the annual flat rate for a household.
And, Mr. Bishop, I just want to say thank you. And unfortunately, Sandy's not here, but thank her as well for the education she gave on this the other day. And if I understood correctly, which I think is an important point for the board and for our residents to understand, is that if we look at even the 15%, we would be in a deficit of $2,176. Although even though it's a small deficit, we can't set a rate that puts us into a deficit, and we can't move surplus until we have some other process of moving stuff into stabilization. So we have to have a sewer fee in such a rate that is at least zero or surplus.
Yes.
Or state law, or a common principle, I forget which.
Yes, and these are all estimates.
Right.
So in order to be sure that we don't have a revenue deficit, which is, it's a real black mark against the town as far as the Department of Revenue is concerned. If you didn't estimate your revenues in order, you know, realistically. We like to have some play in that. Plus, any overage that we get, we make up, we usually give some amount to the sewer stabilization fund on an annual basis to build that up because we know there's work to be done. And we're actually about to get the tie-in bond report, the sewer system evaluation study. So, and we'll know exactly how much that is. So, for example, this year, we gave $100,000 to the sewer stabilization fund from free cash. So this money goes into the general fund, gets back to us as free cash. And we have always put in more money to the stabilization fund. I can't say always. We have recently put in more money to the stabilization fund than we have gotten back from the sewer rate. That said, we don't intend to set the sewer rate at a high level so that we would be getting all of our $100,000 for the stabilization fund from an overage in the sewer estimate. But staff does recommend the highest number here, an 18% increase, because $31,000 is less than a third of what we expect to be asking for for the sewer stabilization fund. So it's not too much, we feel, to ask as an overage, and it will protect us against any increases from the city of Pittsfield or elsewhere in the system.
Jim, Mr. Bishop?
Tom, we have any clue how much stormwater is getting in our sewer systems?
We will soon. There are studies being done. Tie-in bond already did some. We're doing infiltration, they did smoke tests. We will be getting our whole sewer system evaluation study soon. We just don't know exactly when.
My feeling is we're paying for a lot of stormwater to be treated. We shouldn't be.
And absolutely, and we, you know, we'll go after that as a very cost-effective repair.
Because this thing's been going on for a long time. We need those results.
It's a common problem. Sewer systems were put in a long time ago and basically forgotten. I applaud Dalton for having a sewer stabilization fund. It's definitely a step in the right direction.
Okay, so the finance team has recommended the 18% increase?
The finance team initially asked for a higher increase. I believe it was a 20%, but we think 18% is reasonable.
Any questions on the board? I have another question, though.
Just real quick, Tom, because you said it'd be a black mark against the town with DOR.
A revenue deficit.
Right.
That is, if we estimate...
All these numbers are based off estimates from the city of Pittsfield.
Yes.
Right. So I mean, those could change. Even if we set, say, we set that 25 percent, and the city of Pittsfield came back with a much higher number, our number would still be...
The fact that we have a number from them will, would help to smooth over any problems we had with DOR. It's something, we just definitely don't want to cut it too close because it's evidence of poor planning as DOR season.
I noticed that Hensdale has a flat $65,000, and it's actually reduced from FY '22. Why is that? I mean, don't we monitor how much comes out from Hensdale? Or we just take out all the extra and pay for it?
No, they are estimates. It's a historical figure that has been used.
There's a meter at the town.
Well, there's a meter where Hensdale meets Dalton. There's a meter that gets red. So that's how. And it goes to, I think it's a town, not a town, it's a section. She gets to read it. Well, it comes every day.
Okay, so with current, with what?
So with current, with what?
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
Is, you know, I should have mentioned this a long time ago, I want to look at these things, but is there a recommendation from the finance committee?
No. Typically, I don't think the finance committee weighs in on the sewer rate.
I wonder if they should. I wonder if they should, in terms of sewer stabilization strategy too, but that's the topic for today.
I can definitely check in with them about that.
I think we just gotta bite the bullet here, Joe.
What does, what's our, our compensation?
Sandy wanted a 20, Sandy recommended a 20%. I had, in my meeting with her and Tom, I just, I said, let's go back and do the math, and that's what he had in front of him here, is it's going down to a 16%, or actually going down to a 15% to carry it all the way up to 18. So certainly, any member of the board could say, well, let's go back to 20. Jump the 18% to $70, $70 increase.
And just to restate it, it's, the $18, the 18% increase is just $10 over the necessary increase to take care of the Pittsfield rise in costs. So we're going to be paying that $60 anyway.
Right.
So what we're talking about is the increment above that.
Right.
And it's $4 for 16%, $2 for 17%, and another $4 for 18%. The difference between the 4, 2, and 4 comes out in the decimals, and these are just integral figures. We didn't, because it's best for the tax collector to figure it in whole-dollar terms.
Sure. Any further questions on the board? Anywhere's a good motion? Anybody? What's everybody thinking?
I don't think we have any choice. We have to bite the bullet with the 18% raise.
That would put us in the best situation in terms of estimated revenues and would probably provide a considerable amount towards the sewer stabilization fund when some came back as free cash.
How much is in there right now?
I can't say. I believe, I shouldn't say, I'm sorry, I don't have that figure. It's many hundreds of thousands of dollars. I would, you know, order of magnitude, it's a million dollars.
Yeah, because certainly, at the end of the day, you want somebody to go into sewer stabilization because if we just keep that at zero, it's just gonna drain itself over time. Right? That's why I kind of think about the finance committee, is like, what does the finance committee see as an average, you know, move of money to the sewer stabilization for those rainy day situations where we need to do some repairs or whatnot?
And it will help tremendously when we have the study come in and we know what our estimated expenses are going to be.
Right.
Very much like the street scan. And I do understand that that, just to briefly refer to that, that the very high number for reconstructing half of our roads is based on, you know, a heavy-duty reconstruction. And we have tools within the software we have been given where we can tweak those numbers and treat roads a little bit differently and come up with different end numbers. So that's a tool that's available to us to come up with something better than the, you know, $19, $20 million to fix, to bring half of our roads up to, you know, interstate level. It could well be less than that.
So cost alone, because of the Pittsfield changes, if we look at FY '22 actuals to the FY '23 estimate, is basically, when you look at the surplus in '22 going to the deficit, is a difference of $109,000. Right? And so if the estimate for '23 18% increase is surplus $31,754, that's gonna go to sewer stabilization.
Well, I think you'd add those because we're going from a $62,000 surplus to a $172 deficit. So the difference is really 233,000 dollars.
Oh, wait a minute, yeah, I'm sorry. That was a little bit, Tom, no, you're right. All right, so if any board member has a recommendation between the 16 and 18, or if you even if you want to go to 20%, which was the original ask of Sandy, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll split the difference. It's always a motion to do 19% increase.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion second for 19% increase.
19? I thought you said each.
I think...
19, I split the difference.
You split the difference between Sandy's recommendations.
Oh, okay, yeah, very good, Mark. I second that.
So the motion is second to move it to 19% increase? Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob?
I oppose.
Okay. You oppose?
Yeah.
Okay. Bob's a milon that. Is there a motion to close as a sewer commission?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we're on the favor of close? Aye?
Aye.
Number 10, Walker Brook project update, report from GZA Environmental.
We have with us on Zoom, Rosalie Starvis. Thank you for your patience. Rosalie is representing GZA Geo-Environmental, who's been doing the Walker Brook hydrology and hydraulic study. And we're all anxious to hear where we stand.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Hello, Laura.
Everything's been loud and clear until Tom introduced me, and then it started to get choppy. So I hope that we will have a good connection. So, yeah, I'm providing an update on the Walker Brook preliminary engineering study. So I'll talk a little bit about the background for those that may not be familiar. Go over the scope of services that we're providing and our progress, and then some of our preliminary findings, and then also talk about our next steps. So the town of Dalton has been seeking to address impacts of flooding from Walker Brook since about the 1980s. And, you know, there have been prior flood studies done back to 1981 that we've reviewed. And also, this project is funded by a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, Advanced Assistance Grant. So our scope of services is shown here. Those items in bold are the items that we've completed to date. We did an initial site reconnaissance and collected some field data along Walker Brook. We included a subconsultant on our team called Field Geology Services, and they are experts in fluvial geomorphology. So they also did an assessment of the brook. We've done some hydrologic and hydraulic modeling, and then we looked at some preliminary mitigation options. So GZA walked Walker Brook throughout the watershed, all the way, you know, we looked at the brook from the east branch, who's a tonic river, where it outlets, and then all the way up to the wetlands and ponds gravel complex near the gravel pits. So what's interesting about the Walker Brook watershed is that a large portion of it is fairly undeveloped. And then the lower section is where the development is located. So the upper slopes are steep and hilly. In the center part of the watershed, there is the gravel pit and some man-made ponds as well as wetlands. This wetland complex is protecting, well, I would say that, you know, protecting the undeveloped portion of the watershed is important to avoid exacerbating any flooding issues. The wetland complex is a natural buffer, to some extent, to the downstream area. Um, the wetland complex is a natural buffer to some extent to the downstream area. And it also helps to absorb sediment that might be coming off of the watershed in the upper, the steep reaches, um, to prevent that sediment from getting into the, uh, pipe system. Um, on this, uh, map, you can see the bright green line is where the culvert is located, which is about a little over 2,000 feet. And as I mentioned, the, the developed portion is shown with the yellow polygon there at the bottom of the watershed. Um, GZA had prepared a memo back in March that outlined some potential flood mitigation options. Um, at that time, we suggested looking more in depth at the ideas of completely daylighting Walker Brook between High Street and Main Street. Um, or in that case, for that option, we presented that, um, because we wanted to show that it's something that could be considered, although there are a lot of challenges to doing that. Um, that option would include providing a fully naturalized channel in lieu of the underground culvert, um, with a connected flood, floodplain between High Street and Main Street. Um, you would still need to have, um, some piped sections below street crossings in that case. Um, but the challenge here is you do need a, a wide enough corridor to accommodate a channel and of the Brook as well as, um, a floodplain, which would flank the main channel. And there's not really enough space to do that without acquiring properties through that neighborhood. But there are benefits to stream daylighting, um, which would include increased flood storage capacity and conveyance and then eliminating constriction points that, um, you know, when you eliminate those constriction points, you can actually reduce the peak flows and the, and the flashiness. And you also provide habitat, habitat diversity, uh, pollutant removal and aesthetic benefits with a daylighted stream. And then other options we looked at were similar to those that had been described in prior studies. Um, one would be to construct a diversion culvert, um, which would be an additional pipe, um, in addition to what is already located there. Um, and we also looked at the potential for providing detention, um, in the open field that's located south of the senior center. And that's the location where the school, um, used to be and has been torn down. Um, I have an asterisk there because I, um, my understanding is that the town in the past has looked to use that parcel for potential, uh, future development. So, um, moving forward from the time that we prepared this memo in March, we looked at options that avoid the use of that parcel. Uh, that may be something to discuss, um, today. Um, and so, you know, some of the considerations that we were thinking about when we prepared that memo was to, as I mentioned, to make use of that open parcel. Um, but as we've moved forward, we have avoided options that use that parcel. Um, we'd also like to minimize construction on private property. Um, any option should offer some detention. Um, if you increase the pipe size, then you get more water going through without having flooding. Um, but what happens is then you'll have more water at the downstream end. And detention can allow for some storage to avoid increases in, um, those peak flows downstream of Main Street. Um, it can be helpful to maintain existing infrastructure for local runoff. Um, and also, uh, if the, if the solution can provide some, um, water quality or habitat improvements, those are, um, good co-benefits to the flood mitigation solution. Um, as part of our review that we summarized in the, um, March memo, we looked at prior reports. Um, there was a report, um, from 1981 that described the underground culvert in detail and, um, discussed how there were certain sections that, um, were in poor condition or fair condition. Um, but it was not clear based on our review of prior documents or what the town was able to provide, um, if any of the improvements that had been recommended in 1981 had been implemented. Um, and also, given that length of time, we advised, um, performing another video inspection of the culvert. And so that was performed in the late spring. Um, I think I have, so the length of pipe that I have highlighted and read here was, um, as far as the camera could access, um, at the upstream end from High Street, um, down into these structures. At the, um, southwest corner there of the parcel, there's a large, um, water main, I believe, that passes basically goes perpendicular through the pipe. Um, and so it creates an obstruction that the camera couldn't, couldn't get past. Um, and then at the downstream end, they were able to come up from the culvert outlet, um, and then encountered a pile of rocks. Um, and so for, for this section that could not be accessed, you know, there were some attempts made to find additional access points, um, but that wasn't possible. But we do have some information based on the 1981 report. Um, and so even reviewing that report seems that the condition there remains questionable. Um, in the upstream section that we did see, there are changes to the pipe size and the pipe shape. Um, and as I mentioned, there was a, an obstruction, um, by a pipe crossing. It's not that the water can't get over it, but it just minimizes the flow area through that location. Um, and the inspection, um, assessed the, this upper segment as being in good to fair condition for a, approximate 10 to 20 year lifespan remaining. Um, and downstream, um, the culvert under Main Street is a stone arch. Um, when they crept up there, there was a, a location where there was water seeping in from the top of the structure, um, which doesn't, you know, is a little questionable in terms of, it, it just looks like poor condition in that, in that case. And then there's also, you know, a pile of rocks that, um, you couldn't get past that. So I think at the downstream end, it's even more clear that the structures may be in, uh, poor condition. So we, uh, formulated a few alternatives to evaluate with our hydrologic and hydraulic model. Um, and so the first, I can jump ahead to a graphic that might make it easier. So if you look at the left-hand side here, our first alternative, PC1, is to replace the existing culvert, um, so basically enlarging the culvert. And the alternative that we modeled looked at, um, a 60-inch or if there are sections of the pipe that had a larger, um, area than a 60-inch circular pipe, we kept that as is. So that option would be to have, um, a, at least a 60-inch diameter pipe through there. And it would follow the same alignment as, um, the existing pipe. One thing to note, um, is, you know, the, the alignment comes, um, down, uh, Field Street, I believe. And then it generally turns and follows First Street. But then it goes behind the homes that are along Glen and Ave. Um, so that west section of pipe here is, um, through people's backyards, basically.
A question for you.
Sure.
Um, did you look at all about going down Glen and Avenue?
Yes.
Okay.
So PC2, I think that's coming next, so here we go.
Uh, thank you, sorry.
In this case, so in this case, we would, in effect, increase the overall capacity by maintaining the existing culvert where it is, but then also adding a second pipe, um, and then having that come down Glen and Avenue. Um, the question is, you know, how do we want to handle getting that water back to the downstream portion of Walker Brook? Um, Walker Brook downstream of Main Street follows a rip rap lined channel that's fairly steep before it, uh, discharges to, um, the west branch, east branch, who's a tonic river. Um, and then the third option we looked at is PC3, where again, we would keep the existing culvert. Um, and then we would daylight a small section. Um, so the blue line there, uh, would be an open channel. Um, and we're, we looked at this as, you know, you need a, we need a culvert to get across, uh, High Street. And then just north of the parking lot, you would then put that channel back into a pipe. Um, and again, go down Glen and Ave. Um, and the concept we looked at is where you would have a diversion structure, um, right at High Street so that your daylighted channel would receive flow for smaller, um, events, you know, your normal flow and then maybe up to a two-year storm, you know, a decent flood. But, um, and then if you get very large storm, that extra flow would go down into the existing culvert. Um, and before I move on, does anyone want to ask any questions at this point?
Uh, Mr. Bishop?
Yes, uh, as far as containment, did you ever think of putting a detention pond up in the ponds now that we own them?
Um, there were, so I'm not sure what the, is that the sand and gravel pit?
Yeah, we own 41 acres up there. And it comes right next to the, goes right through Walker Brook.
Yeah, so there are some existing ponds there that already provide detention. Um, some of the prior, one of the prior studies had indicated that, um, you know, it might not be significant, but we could potentially revisit that. But we didn't look at that specifically in our modeling.
It, it wouldn't be significant because there's not that much water that high up in Walker Brook, that far up the Brook?
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, with those existing, it, it'd be good not to remove those existing ponds, but, um, adding more might not make a large difference.
Both of our values, our 40 acres, is that a slope?
Yeah.
You enter the path, it's to the right, it's on a slope, button up against, uh, Pleasant Street. So there isn't much low land to put a retention pond other than where Patriga happened, that's on Patriga's land, probably one or two. I have one question. Rosalie, a question? Do you have a general overall business gross figure, uh, on construction cost for all three, uh, options?
Well, no, we didn't, we didn't get to that yet.
All right, thank you.
So, you know, we were leaning towards the PC3 option. Um, you know, the open channel portion does offer some of that detention, um, as well as the water quality and habitat benefits. Um, you know, we limited it to avoiding, um, you know, basically, we'd like to hear the town's thoughts on whether or not that open channel could, um, extend more into that, uh, open field parcel where the school used to be. Um, and, you know, at this stage, uh, you know, we're open to the town's thoughts, of course, on variations on this scheme or even other ideas, um, but this is where we thought we could lean towards so that we can move forward. Um, you know, if we keep the existing culvert in place, um, it's a convenient bypass during construction. Um, and it can accommodate the local drainage without fear of missing any inflow pipes, you know, if we were to remove it. Um, but we still think that the, you know, the backyards behind Glen are potentially at risk because we don't have a good idea of the condition. And, um, you know, that would be something for the town to consider whether or not you want to address that now and potentially replace that pipe through there. Or, and if you replace it, you could also enlarge it. Um, you could also slip line it. Um, it would provide less capacity than it does now, but that might not be of a concern if we're putting in a new pipe. Um, or it, it could be deferred and wait for, you know, piecemeal kind of failures that could potentially occur in the future. And then I just have a couple more slides on our next steps, um, with schedule. So we want, we're hoping to, um, settle on what that preferred option would be so that we could, you know, put it on paper with some 25% level drawings. Um, we also have, um, in our scope to do some more detailed surveys um, that are, would be based on the alignment of the work. Um, so we need to determine what the preferred mitigation option would be um, so that we can prepare the surveys, actual, you know, get an actual topographic surveyor out there and do some geotechnical borings and also some wetlands review delineations. Um, and then, um, somewhat in parallel, we can put that 25% design on paper with those cost opinions, um, at least in a preliminary fashion and then finalize it once the, you know, more detailed surveys are completed. And then that was all I have. There, apparently there was a beaver in the pipe when they did the video inspection, so.
Who knows? Don't get us started on beavers.
So, so can, can you go back to those three options? The slide was the three options?
Sure.
Yeah, I think the, the, one of the problems we've had with replacing the existing culvert is that there's been development in, on those properties since the culvert was put in, and what I heard is that there are actually structures now, garages and, and other, like backyard structures, that would, you know, have to be moved in order to get access and replace that culvert.
Right.
Yeah, they got the navigation section.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, borderline.
When, when you're, when you're going, you know.
Coming deck.
Between the houses.
Houses, divisions.
Yeah, through, through the backyards. It, it would help to have a little more detail from your, from your drawings here to show more exactly where the culvert comes relative to the structures that are on those properties. So a blow-up of that area would be helpful, I think. From what I understand from previous descriptions I've heard from Dan, was that that was probably an unlikely scenario, based on there being current, there being subsequent development of those, of those areas. So if we could get a clearer picture of any structures that might be affected, that would be very helpful, to, to at least maybe weed out that first alternative.
Yeah, the, as I mentioned, there's the option of potentially slip lining that section of culvert through the backyards, the slip, basically, you take a smaller size pipe, insert it, and then grout around it, and that wouldn't solve the flooding problem by itself, but if we had that, do, do that in addition to a new pipe, we could account for that, because you would reduce the capacity by slip lining, but at least it's a potential method to stabilize that area. If there's, and we can do, you know, more of a walkthrough to see if there are more signs of potential degradation or failure there, but, given what we know, it seems that that could be a risk there.
Hey, Rosalie, just my lack of technical expertise here, would a slip lining be?
Um, it's basically taking a smaller size pipe that would fit within the existing pipe, and pushing it up into there from the downstream end, and then what they do is they push grout in, you know, between, in the void space between the new pipe and the old structure.
Yeah, thank you. Todd, you bring up a very valid point about this option, too. I mean, just looking at this, too, this diagram here, I don't know how accurate it is, but this line here shows it going right through the middle of this big house, and down here, further, it goes through house, right through the middle of houses.
Yeah, that, that, um.
Kind of a tough problem to overcome.
Yeah, the, um, the graphics are not super accurate, I mean, the, basically, let me take away.
I think that's what Mr. Hutchinson asked for, was a clearer aerial view of where the existing thing goes, if in fact it does go through the middle of houses, or it goes behind the houses, but under decks, garages, or.
Yeah, I think that.
If you can see, it's a little bit faint, but if you can see that fainter line that has pink on it.
Yeah.
That's more accurate in terms of where the pipe is.
Where the pipe goes, right, and the blue line, yeah, it shows it going in front of the house.
Right, I think, you know, I don't think it goes under any houses, but it's true that there are, I know there are fences built across there, because we couldn't walk back there, and there's probably, you know, small sheds and things like that.
This, this, this project falls under the scope of Mr. Grant, right, or Miss McRae?
Uh, yeah.
So, Grant, what is, um, what's your view on this, and what's, is there a recommendation from the planning board? Because I see that, Rosalie, I see that you're ASAP in defining one of these choices is on the list to get the twenty-five percent design, but I don't think we have enough, I don't have enough input right now to make a decision on that, so, Grant, is there a recommendation from Town Planner or Planning Board?
Well, first, um, this is the first that we've seen this level of detail at all, anyone has, this is.
Oh, so this hasn't gone through Planning Board yet?
No, no, this is.
No, and I, I don't necessarily know if the Planning Board, maybe Conservation should have input as well, but yes, this is the first time we're seeing this, so we don't have input from a board as of yet.
And we don't have, we don't have cost projections of either, of any of these options at the moment?
No.
No, enough time.
I don't think we can make a recommendation, we don't cost.
Well, it, it's a chicken and egg thing, because.
Estimate the cost.
Well, the cost can't be estimated until they've worked out the details of these, these are general concepts.
Yeah.
So, Rosalie, would you have a cost estimate at twenty-five percent or, or seventy-five percent?
Yeah, we could do it at twenty-five percent.
Well, you won't have, you won't have cost of options, you'll, you'll have your twenty-five percent design, but you should be able to have enough experience to go, option one's going to cost you a million, option two's going to cost you one point five to two, whatever the cost is.
Yeah, I mean, we could come up with some high level.
That's it, yeah, yeah. I know we can get more detail once we get to the design phase, but it's.
Yeah, we could develop.
And the point's that, yeah, twenty-five percent on design phase, you'd have a cost approximate estimate for all three options.
Is that right, Rosalie?
Um, so at this phase, we could develop very high-level estimates, just more for comparative purposes.
Yeah, that's what I need.
Um, you know, less for accuracy, I think, but then, based on that, we selected an alternative to move forward with, then we would develop a more detailed design, and then refine that cost estimate.
Yeah, so, so it would help tremendously to have the ballpark estimates for these, that, especially if it could clearly identify a least-cost option, and then, if there were any non-cost benefits for, say, the, the next option, because there might be, there might be other considerations, but just, you know, what would the least-cost option be, and then are there any compelling arguments for not using the least-cost option? I think that, that would help make that decision, and then, my guess is, is, you know, the board would lean toward the least-cost option, but if there were compelling arguments for some other reason, the next option might be considered, depending on how much more expensive it is. So is that something that you can, you can, you can give us like a one-page errand?
Yes.
I love you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Pull that together.
Hi. Who in line? I, I, I'd like to make a suggestion, I don't know if this is crazy or not, and I might be going off, off reservation here, so keep me in line. This is another big concern for the residents of the town, for what we're going to do with this open space over here, the whole diners, and, Rosalie, your presentation was very informative, so thank you for that. I'm, I'm wondering, we have this, we have a special town meeting coming up, we have the road update, we have the Walter Brook update, these would be great updates, present to community members for informational purposes, and just get some general feedback or thoughts. It's a big decision, I think. Would that?
Well, I, no, I don't think we should do that until we have the twenty-five percent, the three options with approximate cost tags.
Rosalie, how long will it take you to put together one, that cost estimate in general?
Uh, I probably could do something by, say, next week at this time, hopefully.
So we'd have the ballpark, very high-level ballpark, numbers, talk through the, because this is very informative, especially for the residents who live along Walter Brook, and to understand options, and then, so we can have an informed decision along the path.
Well, Rosalie, I don't think we need it within a couple of weeks, I think town meetings, uh, August twenty-ninth?
August twenty-ninth, yeah.
Oh, August twenty-ninth, yeah, yeah, we do need it within a couple of weeks.
So, so, my off-the-reservation, does that make sense, or should we, should we not do, should we not do that?
Oh, do you mind if I say, well, the Planning Board hasn't looked at it.
Yeah.
Conservation Commission, they haven't looked at it. I think, even presenting it to the town, I think we're rushing it.
So get, so get the feedback, you know, the figures first.
Yeah, and I, and I know we have the thing where they want it by ASAP, but I think this is, this is a, this is a very large project to be.
Well, and, and that's our timeline, you know, and, and, and the original for that, which isn't going to work out now, as I, as I've explained it to you, was that we, we wanted to get a final design and cost estimate in time to apply for the construction grant, the implementation grant, and it doesn't look like that's going to happen, except there's a chance that the implementation grant will be moved to a January deadline.
What's the current deadline?
Even, I'm sorry?
What's the current deadline?
October ninth.
October ninth.
Yeah, so, so that, that's, that's not going to be doable, but we, I, I, I don't see this really as a Planning Board issue, it's more of a Conservation Commission issue, it doesn't have to do with zoning, I'll put it that way, and, 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 you know, the Planning Board might take up something broader philosophically than that, but it, it's not strictly speaking a, a Planning Board issue, but it would help, so I, I think we're going to, we're going to blow through the deadline, Rosalie, in any case. So I, I agree, it would be helpful to get townspeople's input on it, but what we need them to get input on is the, the relative costs of the, the, the three options, and then, you know, again, any associated benefits that might make it worth doing an option that was not the least-cost option.
So if it's October ninth, sorry, could I just, I was just going to say, at any rate, it'd be very helpful to have the approximate price tag on the three options.
Oh, yeah.
For this board.
Oh, sure.
It would be a help. So if it's October ninth, what's the, you think October ninth is being pushed on?
No, it, it's, it's an impossible deadline for us at this point to, to have a, a grant proposal in by then.
Why, I'm just kind of trying to follow the volume, why is it impossible when we're two months out?
Oh, because we have to have the final design and cost estimate before we can go out to bid.
Okay.
And the bidding process takes a long period of time, and then after the project is bid, the engineer's going to have to come up with the grant proposal.
The FEMA, it's a grant funded by FEMA, and they have strict procurement requirements, so if the town asks GZA for assistance to prepare the grant application without procuring us specifically for that, and also including in that scope of work, the final design in the future after the grant is obtained, then we wouldn't, so, we could jump in and just prepare the grant application for the town, but then we would be ineligible to apply for the work to do the final design, if that makes sense.
So we, we're, we're going to bid the preparing the grant and doing the engineering. I, I'll, I'll mention that a, a similar project in a previous town I worked in, it took us four years to get the grant, so it's, it's, it's very competitive, it's not a gimmick by any means, so we really want a strong proposal, which includes a benefit cost analysis, it, it's a, it's a complex proposal, because it's a lot of money.
Any questions from the presentation? Mr. Mullins, also?
No.
Okay. Rosalie, thank you so much, that was very helpful. We can't make a decision on, on the choice tonight, but I think we have a pathway forward to get there, and we'll just need to know those cost estimates, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, so I'll look at those cost estimates, and then I guess Tom can let me know about potentially presenting to either a special town meeting or the Conservation Commission.
I did that down the road. All right, great, thank you, Rosalie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is the Town Planner update, and we're at, just doing a time check, everybody's, we're at quarter nine right now, we have a couple more big things on the, on the agenda to talk through, and I know that we have Grant, been patiently waiting, and then we have Bud, and also Pat, so we can, if I can make a motion to go with number eleven, the Town Planner update, and then Bud, you are here for Gulf Road?
Gulf Road, then there's.
Gulf Road, transport station, Division Road?
Yes.
And then Pat, Town Hall renovation?
Yes.
Okay, so let's go, okay, so they're all in one, anyways, okay. Sorry, never mind, take the motion off the table, go ahead, Grant.
Okay, so I believe you have the report in front of you, so I can try and save a little bit of time. I'll start with the Planning Board, they've entered into a district local technical assistance contract with BRPC, and they're working on the housing chapter of Dalton's Comprehensive Plan First, that was the Planning Board's choice to work with, so BRPC will be sending us some data in, in the form of a housing needs assessment, which is, it's basically a data-driven document, which the Planning Board will use to begin to put together a housing action plan, which is sort of taking the data and putting them into more, into like a form of goals, and both of those documents will help shape the housing chapter of the comprehensive master plan. The Dalton Redevelopment Authority has been on a brief hiatus following town meeting, the DRA plans to have a fall kickoff meeting at the stationary factory on September sixth, and then hold their regular meeting the following Wednesday on September fourteenth, and those will resume at eight AM, and that has been slated right now for the select board office in Town Hall, if the Callahan Room opens up, then I would anticipate they meet there. The Dalton Green Committee is working closely with Pat to obtain all the necessary engineering work to become eligible for a fiscal year twenty-three, fall two thousand twenty-two Green Communities grant, the works planned to be focused on the library at Town Hall, and basically, right now, the, the work's dependent upon an engineering study, which will determine the route the committee takes in the application, basically, the state is requesting a thermal barrier, or to the thermal envelope, and Pat could probably explain that better than me, but an engineering study will tell us whether or not a certain amount of weight, I guess replicating a snow load, would be able to hold or not, and basically, the, the committee will take what the engineers give us and apply for funds appropriately. Additionally, the Green Communities Division at Department of Energy Resources announced a Climate Leaders two-point-o program, so that's something the Green Committee will be discussing at their next meeting, and probably some more to come. An application was submitted to the One Stop for Growth under the Mass Works Infrastructure Program back in June, the application includes funding requests for drainage and repaving a portrait road, and to anticipate, award notification should be out relatively shortly. Dalton has been included as a partner in a regional culvert assessment application, which is being led by a partnership titled Berkshire Clean, Cold, and Connected, it's made up of the team employees from BRPC and the Who's Atonic Valley Association, and so the partnership entered into a three-year agreement with Massachusetts Department of Fish and Game and the Division of Ecological Restoration, it's slated that it's, the goal is to support healthy aquatic systems and address climate change in Berkshire County. It's slated that the goal is to support healthy aquatic systems and address climate change in Berkshire County. So we hope the grant is awarded. And what that would look like is basically a team would go out and assess the culverts, and if Bud has a priority culvert to focus on, that could be included in this grant, assuming it was awarded. And Dalton would not, it's something that we've been focusing on for a while, trying to get included in a culvert assessment. And this is really good because VRPC and the Whozatonic Valley Association do a lot of the legwork for the town. And lastly, the Conservation Commission and the Open Station Recreation Committee have both been contacted by different people to, for the same purpose, basically. So the Conservation Commission was contacted by Eversource. And Eversource was looking for some locations for off-site mitigation, which stems from Eversource clearing about 50 feet of tree line near an existing transmission line that runs through Dalton. And in the Open Station Recreation Committee's case, the Chair, Taylor Staubach, has been in touch with Berkshire Natural Resources Commission, I believe, and so BNRC. And they had some off-site mitigation requests for locations based on their work in paving the old mill trail parking lot. And Bud Hall and I were actually on a couple of site visits for something called the Whozatonic Valley Project, which is not related to the Whozatonic Valley Association directly. But basically, they are interested in some green infrastructure retrofit. So there are a couple of locations which a team from the University of New Hampshire and ERG out in Eastern Mass looked at. And we think, long story short, is a couple of those sites under the Whozatonic Valley Project, or excuse me, the Whozatonic Watershed Project, I'm getting them mixed up, may be applicable for off-site mitigation. And if you have any questions about that, feel free to ask them.
Great. Thank you, Grant. Any questions on the board?
I got one quick one.
Mr. Christian?
Grant, on the Eversource request for 50 feet, that's on each side of the transmission line all the way up through, I understand correct?
I believe so, yeah. So maybe it could be saved as 100 feet total.
And it's going to be destroyed. Yeah, it's going to come before the commission.
Any other questions, Grant?
No, I didn't hear clearly what Bob just said after the question about 50 feet on both sides.
That's going to go before the Conservation Commission for review because there's a lot of woodland on both sides. He said 50.
And it's one half, it's a lot, we showed that, 50 feet, that's a lot of woodland.
Yeah. Any other questions for Grant? Okay, Aaron Nunn, Grant, thank you for a great update. Appreciate it. And just a comment, I'm really excited to see the great collaboration with, you know, Pat and the Green Committee and Grant. And we all know the history of the years of the Green Committee, and it's great to see that all kind of moving in a very nice direction. So thank you all who were involved in that. Gulf Road update and a letter to Pittsfield. Mr. Richardson and Bud?
The letter to Pittsfield was included in your packet. I want you to sign it just to get a little higher level of attention, and Bud can tell you why the higher level of attention is needed.
We, I went down, again, to Gulf Road. We hadn't been in a while. Haven't been in a couple of months. But it's still all washed out, done by the swamp. I think the beavers are gone. I don't know what happened, but I don't see any action down there. Someone kind of broke the deal. So it kind of just needs to be repaired and kind of, I guess, the DM stuff, which I think is, you can't really mess with that, I believe. Is on the edge of the road, like the mud they put up? So, and that's Pittsfield. I called again this morning, and I was supposed to get a call back. I didn't. He says it's an environmental department's hand at the city, and it's kind of been going on since, I don't know, I think October.
You made a few outreaches to the city already.
Yes.
And we just not getting any attention. So this is a letter that's been drafted. I think everybody's got a chance to take a look at the packet. That goes to Mayor Tire, and just really bring to her attention. And I think that Yeah, it highlights that we've already reached out repeatedly to Pittsfield, so it really brings it to her attention in a formal way.
It's pretty obvious that Gulf Road is not going to be open this year.
Yeah, I mean, they have to come do some work, you know, to make it better.
I mean, it's not, I went over and saw it. I saw your picture. It's not a major job. With the right equipment, material, it's, you know, probably one day's job.
Right.
Like just to get them to do it, the bureaucracy.
Right. And, you know, it being swamp, wetland, and stuff has come across the other side of the road. It's all a little bit of a cleanup thing there, which, you know, that's not our territory to touch, so.
Well, keep that to him, bud.
So is there a motion to accept the letter and send it to the mayor?
Sure.
For a second?
Sure.
Motion second, discussion. Aaron Nunn on the favor?
Aye.
I'll pass you around for signatures. Transfer station?
Transfer station, it's going pretty good so far for the, you know, month or so, a little over a month, we've been in control. And we did a lot of cleaning up over there. Kind of organized it a lot better than it was. It was kind of a little bit of a mess over there, but we've got it up. It looks, it looks pretty nice. And I took a look today. Actually, our attendant, Brian, is on vacation this week. So our highway department guys are kind of staffing the hours. He would be there. So we went through a little training over there past, last week. And I took a look. He gave a very good record of everything he's got over there. And so far, we've sold 488 permits, you know, full transfer station permits, 13 recycling stickers, 620 small bags, and 2,033 big bags. So it's about like 70,000 in revenue, just about, just a little bit shy. So it's going good, you know, I think everything's going good, you know. Hopeless, I think we're usually in the high 600s on stickers. So like a couple hundred away, probably is where we normally are. There's a new textile bin over there, which got put in, I think, Thursday last week, which is for, you know, recycling clothes and all that kind of thing. And we did receive a grant for mattress recycling, which come November 1st, we have to recycle mattresses. You can't throw them away unless they're soiled. So we did win that grant, which is in conjunction with Northern Berkshire Solid Waste, so it's some communities up north. So our solid waste committee meeting, by next time we have that, we're going to kind of go through and figure out the prices for recycling the mattresses from the other towns. Like we kind of have our rate already, which I kind of looked at it a little bit today. It seems like our rates would just stay the same. It'll be fine. But we'll just have to charge more for the other towners. We'll just figure it out. We'll go through and figure out those numbers. And at the moment, the compactor's broken over there for the solid waste. So it's just going in a big 40-yard open-top container at the moment. Like it broke Friday. They were working on it today, most of the day, so we're still going to work on it. I don't, I guess it's pretty rotted down the bottom, so it's kind of a good thing we, you know, inherit it.
Could sell it and work it out?
Yeah.
Sell it, let their guys go and work on it. Good.
Yeah, because it's, that's
It's always a good place, right?
That's part of the deal. The money we pay a month is they take care of the maintenance for it. And I guess it's pretty rotten, pretty rough shape, so at the moment, it's, we just got to go the other way. So we just want to squish it with a loader and hope for the best, do as much out as we can.
Your stickers will be 489, because I need to buy mine this week.
Oh, yeah.
Great. Any questions on the transfer station? And then as we kind of move that forward, if we can kind of look at that trend of revenue, making sure like what our goal objective is and see if we're
Getting there.
Getting there. Looks like it's in the right direction.
I think so. It seems like it's going pretty good, yeah. It'll slow down now, I know that much, but it's still, I think we're doing pretty good.
If there's no questions on the transfer station, Division Road?
You know, the only thing I really have for Dalton Division Road at this moment is it will get paved this year, but it might not be till probably October at this point, probably early October. I talked to the contractors today. So, you know, just a scheduling thing, I should notify them that we have more of a set date on what it's going to be, depending on weather. But that's after, and obviously, Tom, we did the contract for the tip projects. With the engineer, Tom, I'm sure has a little, I don't know if you guys talked to him about that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
That's kind of where it's at.
Okay. Any questions on Division?
Yeah, he had a question.
Sure.
Well, it's about this town is funded engineering firm. We're just waiting to get the funds to fund them and get them to work. Now, the question here is, when they start to work, what's encompassed in the bid? There is a section about 20, almost 3,000, 2,600 feet, that is 10, 15 houses in that section that aren't on the sewer. And the neighbors want to know, as you know, they've contacted you. Are we including a sewer component and water, there's no water either, in our engineering plans?
I don't know if that was in the scope of work or not.
Yeah, I mean, you have to know one way or the other.
No, it's not in the engineering scope of work for the company that's going to be doing it. But the company has to coordinate with the town and
The water.
the district and the city of Pittsfield. So that it's the town's responsibility to do that work.
Yep.
So the state's not going to pay for that. So, well, and we're paying for the engineering anyway, but
Why is the state going to pay for it in the scope of the project? Certainly, it's going to cost more, but on Whozatonic Street, they paid for the sewer and water.
I think we're talking two projects. One is the, the one that we're going to be now, just to kind of level up Dalton Division.
I'm talking about
And the second is the bigger one.
Yeah, they could include a provision for providing sewer hookups for this section of Dalton Division Road, approximately a half a mile, where they know the sewer is provided. And that goes approximately from the boarding house there, whatever the name of it is.
Tamarack House.
Yeah, to where the road starts to go up the hill. And those houses are on the sewer, and they wide beyond. And so always, somebody has to make this decision or approach the engineers with authorization to suggest to them that they provide in their plan a sewer and possibly a water. But we can't speak for the water, but I'm sure it's the same thing. And that's included in the state funding. That's in the scope of the job. That's what happened on Whozatonic Street.
This is not a state funding job, it's a state.
No.
The first one was
No, if we want to do anything extra, if we want to add something, that's on us.
No.
We're talking, if I can, let's separate the two projects.
Right.
Yeah, the first project, which is just what we're doing, town-funded, to level up and kind of patchwork, while waiting the 27, 28 for the larger complete reconstruction, which may be the timeline we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what John Jobs thought, right? We started off, yes, we're going to get it done. It's going to be later than we thought. Because we're having to go to the second bidder, because the first bidder took off, bid off more than they could chew. So we're reorganizing our situation with getting, getting the, what is it, Millen? Millen film.
Now, the MPO, which I'm, it's a big, I'm the representative to the town, from the town of Dalton to the MPO. I really have to have answers to questions like this. If they change the scope of the job, I'm not sure what's in the scope of the job. But it's still funded by the state and federal government.
Not the sewer or the water?
Yes. That's the way they did Whozatonic Street.
I didn't know if, for some reason, I thought the water, the district paid for the water. I was pretty sure, I thought Gibby did that.
It's possible.
And I know there was a sewer, we stubbed all the sewers off the houses on Whozatonic Street all the way down. So out of, from the main to the private property. I didn't know if that was in the scope or the town paid. For some reason, I thought the town paid for that. I'm not
They paid for some of it.
Right.
But installing the sewer would be part of, installing the sewer line in this unsued piece of land or like the property would be included in the project? Probably going to cost a lot more. They already put aside $12 million for this job.
Bud, if you can check on the scope of that, I'll make a note, too.
And Bud, it's probably up to you to recommend, if it's not in there, that we enlarge the scope of the job to include a sewer. So the engineers can engineer it.
Well, what we're going to be voting on the end of August doesn't include that. We would have to add that later on.
Right, in the engineering, engineering budget, additional engineering cost, yeah, probably. Probably will be anyway, because then the funds that are set aside now, including the 124,000, are approximately 10% of the 1.2 million, or the 12 million that is set aside. But that's certain to increase. That's been the same figure for eight years. I mean, cause of increase. So it's probably 15 million right now. And 10% of that would be 1.5 million.
Thank goodness the bid is already in.
Yeah, that's probably why you only have one or two bidders, right, Tom?
Two.
Yeah, two.
And, you know, if we're not going to do this, it doesn't matter to me. But somebody has to tell those people down there, no sewer.
Any other questions on Dalton Division? Aaron Nunn, thank you.
Thank you.
I hope you had a great vacation, by the way.
Well, thanks.
And welcome back. Town Hall renovation, Pat? And guys, thank you for hanging in. It's been a long night, so appreciate it. Bob's going to buy coffee in a moment.
Okay, so we went back, we reviewed everything, went through different scenarios, plans, and the best plan that we could come up with to keep the cost as low as possible, but get the job completed correctly, is what we put together, where we show you the grant totals and then adding in, there was a total of three alternates. So, and we chose two out of three. But before we get into that, if you want to, I hand you a couple of prints, just so you could we could try to simplify this, so you could see everything and get a little bit better understanding of what's going to happen inside the building. So on the first plan, where it shows X is going through a few of the rooms that you're looking at. So what that shows is on the very large room, that's the Opera House. And basically, what this view is showing, there's still a few clerical things that we need to work out with the prints. I was on vacation last week, so when I got to the prints, I didn't have any time to try and get some of the clerical things adjusted. But for the majority of everything on here, the large room, that is the above section, above Town Hall on the second floor, that is showing that area there where it's Xed out, is showing that there will be sheet rock added to that ceiling. Along with the two rooms to the right is basically the two offices on the third floor. Those two, X and O, is just showing where sheet rock would be added there. So, and the two rooms, that would not be an abatement process. That would just be covering up all the plaster in those two rooms.
Encapsulating.
Right, encapsulating just those two rooms, that is it. So if you flip to the second page, it gives a little bit of a red line outline of the room. So with the exception of, on the left-hand side where it says painted brick, no plaster, there's no abatement going on there. But in the rest of the areas that is highlighted in red going around, all that area is the plaster that needs to be abated out of the building. So that is, basically, this view is showing the ceiling, the little four-foot walls, and then the entire ceiling of that room, where we're going to take out all the plaster. They are going to be removing, if you see, it looks like steps at the end of that red area. There's levels in there, that is the photo booth room. red area, uh, there's levels in there, that is the photo booth room, so the photo booth room will be completely abated, as well as that is completely asbestos, but they're going to be removing also all those boards on the floor, so they can get insulation put in there. Um, so that's, uh, it does say they're demolishing the wood, believing the wood joists, uh, they will make everything level there and put down plywood to cover up, uh, the insulation that's put in there. Underneath, there is a sealed ceiling in the hallway of the Town Hall, where you walk in and you would take a right to the library, or you go into the public restroom, that's that small area in that ceiling, that is completely encapsulated above, so there won't be any removing of anything underneath for there, because that's totally encapsulated. So going back to the first print, and to start covering up on the uh, alternates that are added in on the sheet, so alternate number one, uh, that we took a look at, was instead of, uh, you can keep the cost down a little bit by strapping the ceiling, just putting uh, plastic down, and then putting the insulation on top of the plastic. Uh, at this time, I feel that that is just a very bad idea, uh, it's a large building, uh, we worked very hard on trying to keep the critters out of a large building, but that's nearly impossible, so they do come through, they do love insulation, they will chew down through the plastic, and then next thing you know, we have the insulation falling back on the ceiling tiles again. So what we looked at is, is the best option is to put the sheet rock underneath the new ceiling joists, or not new ceiling joists, underneath existing ceiling joists, it'll be strapped. So there's no new construction of new ceiling joists or anything, we're leaving everything existing, uh, with the exception of the wiring, uh, so then we'll add strapping to that with a vapor barrier, put the sheet rock up there, which would be five-eighths plywood, and then that'll be taped, uh, and sealed, and then the insulation could be placed on that, uh, which will help in the long run from preventing critters from coming down and chewing up everything. Uh, so that is the best, we feel at this time, best scenario to add on that one alternate. Uh, alternate two was to add in a catwalk, and if you look on that first print, it kind of shows right on the outer side, um, shows like, uh, almost like, i- it's a walkway, it says new foot two, new two-foot wide, three-quarter inch, uh, plywood walkway going around. We decided not to do that, right now, I just have planks up there, the only thing I have to do for maintenance up there is I go up, just, uh, I walk right down the planks, check the ceiling, uh, make sure there's no leaks, check the windows, make sure there's nothing broken, uh, so to put in that, um, catwalk at this time, I believe we can do something similar, um, to that catwalk later on for a much cheaper cost. That alternate was over seventeen thousand dollars, and I believe, uh, with my experience, that, um, this can be done at a much, much cheaper cost, and it can be done later. I can just relay down the planks for right now, so I can do what I've been doing, there's nothing different from what I've been doing, uh, for checking for maintenance issues. Alternate three was to encapsulate those two offices up there. Again, a couple minor clerical errors, uh, I believe, when they wrote this up, they thought the town planner was part of one of these offices, it's not, one of the offices is historic, the other office is building inspector and the board of health, um, that's the other office. So, with those two offices being encapsulated, then we can, uh, move everybody back in, with the exception of, uh, keeping the building, um, unoccupied to, uh, the public. So if there's a meeting or something like that, we still have a meeting room downstairs, so if board of health has to meet with the public, uh, they can come down, meet with them in the Callahan Room or something like that, uh, so that way it does not trigger the elevator. Uh, like I said, we looked at other options, but everything that I kept going through, if we did one thing, we triggered another thing, we triggered another, it was just a domino effect. This is really the only scenario that doesn't trigger anything to have to trigger that elevator or additional work to what you see that, uh, we're presenting to you right now. So, going through the costs, um, everything spent up to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, uh, is in the left-hand column, and then in the center column is to, um, I don't believe I changed the date on that, but that should be to June thirtieth, uh, it says June twentieth, but I believe it should be till June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, and then the last column is the overall costs of what things will cost, and as you come down, uh, we go through grand total, which is, uh, and I have to apologize, I grabbed the wrong sheet for myself, I got cut off.
We have six sixty-two.
Six sixty-two, and then, uh, I'm just missing the last alternate. Then adding the sheet rock is thirty-three thousand with the fifteen percent contingency, um, and then I believe, uh, did I miss, yeah, I got sheet rock, oh, and then she, that's what I missed, the sheet rock to the third floor offices is thirty-three thousand, so the sheet rock to the ceiling, um, is twenty-six thousand forty dollars. So in adding into fifteen percent contingency with the construction total, comes out to six sixty-two, four seventy-seven, but adding in the sheet rock for the third floor offices, uh, is thirty-three thousand plus the fifteen percent contingency, and the total comes out to seven hundred thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Um, these are, again, projected costs, we haven't sent anything out to bid yet to get actual cost from contractors. So, uh, we made sure that we went with, and, you know, all the experience I have of forty-plus years, working with the engineers, we went with a safe projection number, uh, as you had mentioned, to come back to this table one more time and make sure we got it right. Uh, this is right, this is a safe projection number, uh, to go out, and then we can send this, um, out to bid.
So we had, um, appropriation of five hundred thousand, so the additional appropriation of two hundred thousand four twenty-seven?
Yes.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Mr. Boyle, any questions?
Uh, I was under the impression that the board voted to, uh, not abandon Board Choice of Words, but seal off the third floor offices, one, because of the inability to provide handicap access, and two, basically it's a fire trap. And, uh, you seem to indicate, Pat, that there's still going to be offices up there.
So we had further discussions with the engineer in a construction meeting, that as long as we put that as no public access, we can still run, and in the access, um, code book, it does not have anything stated about employees, and what it states is public access. So, as long as that portion of building is not used as public access, uh, it doesn't require or trigger the elevator. Uh, there's also an emergency exit going out, which according to the building code, uh, there isn't enough people up there to require, uh, a much larger, um, scale access. So there is, uh, where the town planner's office is, uh, there is stairs going up to the roof, and the roof has a fire escape ladder coming right down, uh, right down to the ground in the back of the Town Hall. So, there is two, there is an escape route, and there's also the main route. So, and with being under a certain number of people up there, I, I can't say the exact total, eleven ringing a bell in my head, but I'd have to look at it for the exact number of people, uh, allowed up there, uh, but that was already looked at and talked over a long time ago with the building inspector, uh, when I first started, uh, because there was a question asked about that, and we looked it up, and it's within building requirement and fire code requirement, uh, for the access for the employees working up there. So, again, going back to blocking off that, we, we can, if that's what the board desires, but, uh, the access book does not state anything on employees working up there, just public access, and it's, their key word is public access.
I understand what you're saying, but I think the board did vote to do that.
Okay.
Um, yes, and, and, and we would ask you to, um, to reconsider that vote, uh, partly because the original scope, which was also voted, um, did return the building to its, its current use pattern, and that's what we're asking for now, is let's, let's, let's have what we had before, that'll take a lot of pressure off, um, finding offices for the, the four, um, the four offices that are up there now, two of them in one room.
If I have to go back to the mess, or if I recall correctly, we took that vote off because we thought it was going to trip an elevator required.
Correct, so we figured we just shut down the third floor and wouldn't have to worry about it, but discussing with the engineer, going through the access code book, um, what we're doing is not triggering the elevator, and employees, uh, don't trigger the access, uh, it's public access.
And that variable, that we're encapsulating the asbestos, so it's just asbestos removal and not reconstruction of that work area.
Right, so encapsulating it, uh, keeps the cost, um, down, so that helps incredibly keep the cost down.
Well, yeah, it, it would, it would still be the case that we, that we weren't triggering the elevator if we, if we stripped those offices, if we, if we gutted them, because we're still doing asbestos reconstruction. Uh, but, uh, so, so this is just a, a cost-saving measure that allows us to use those offices, because now the plaster is compromised in those two offices, and we need to do something to it. Even if we didn't, um, have anyone up there, we should still encapsulate it so that plaster doesn't deteriorate further.
I, we wouldn't be able to use those rooms as storage, because the plaster is deteriorating on the walls.
Yes, it's
So we couldn't put anything in there, because anything, if something falls, now everything in there is contaminated, no. And that's one of the reasons why we also put it as an alternate, because we knew the third floor was voted on to be closed off, so we made that an alternate, knowing that, you know, that's still a possibility, but doing it this way, we don't have to worry about, uh, those three offices, um, slash four, because there's still one up there now, and that room is in, uh, very good condition, so.
So your recommendation, we, we reverse our position on the third floor offices to do this?
Yes, because we don't have anything that's triggering the elevator, um, we're doing everything we can do to keep the cost down.
Okay.
Uh, and that would also in the long run help keep the cost down, because then we don't have to look around or possibly lease other buildings, uh, for these individuals.
Or cleaning up plaster that falls
Right, because if, if those offices keep deteriorating, now we're just leaving an environmental issue up there.
So, so we, we should encapsulate the offices where the plaster is compromised anyway, whether or not we use them, and once we do it, there's no reason not to use them, but just go back to the way we were before.
And we always had a note on the door, um, so i- it doesn't change by a whole lot, anybody that could not make the stairs anyways, we had a note on the door to see the town, the individual, we'd call to the town manager, and we would make arrangements for everybody to meet in a location, uh, that was accessible to everyone anyway, so it, it only changes a little bit by just shutting down complete public access to that building.
Which effectively seals it off to the public.
As long, as long as we're fine, everything else, and we don't trip an elevator, and we're current use and things of that nature. So, I guess the first thing is we need to reconsider our prior vote to close off the third floor offices, or consider, uh, I guess just simply reversing that vote too.
I just want to make sure that we're going to, if we're going to do this, we're actually going to be back in two months because of this, and something else, because it, it feels like this started off, I mean, at this point, I don't even know what started this whole thing, what we're going to do. I remember the VAT, and then all of a sudden we're spending a million, we're going to spend a million dollars because we've got asbestos. So I don't want to be back here in a month or two months, because now we got to put a, a handrail in up on the third floor, I just
What are, what are changing it?
I know Mr. Esco feels the same way, because it's all about the cost, the reason to close the third floor was because of cost.
Right.
And going to the taxpayers again and saying, we need two hundred thousand dollars more, I don't want two hundred and one thousand dollars more i- i- in a month or two months, I just want to be done with this.
We go back to the original town vote, was, is, um, the reconstruction of that third floor, asbestos removal of like two hundred and fifty thousand, and Tom arrived and worked with Pat, did some review of that, that's when I went to five hundred, and because of, um, material costs and the other items with the VAT removal, and then moving to the bank, moving, and so we get the bank lease, the Kittredge building lease, the other movement of storage costs, we get the cost increasing, and I had the, um, I guess privilege, this is in me with Tom, Pat, and the architect, basically telling them, we need three, we need options.
Right.
Give us your best option, so this is the final number. I, I, I'm with you, Mark, I, I don't want to save another dollar. Right, so I think the, the decision is, if we, if we don't do anything, we, we have a, we have a major risk because of the asbestos up there and the ceiling tiles
Either way, it'll have to be repaired.
Sorry?
Either way, it would have to be repaired, because I, I myself need to walk through that area, uh, to go up to the clock tower, uh, so I have to walk through that area, so if, if the rooms keep deteriorating, then it, it just makes that environment much more hazardous for even myself to walk through. So, what we did is, to answer your question about that third floor, Mark, it, it's just thirty-three thousand dollars, that's it, it's just encapsulating those two rooms, that's it, there's no additional work being done to them, it's just encapsulate the sheet rock, uh, not looking at changing lights, we just want to encapsulate the sheet rock, you take the lights down to put the sheet rock on, put the lights back up, that's it, there's, uh, all the wiring's staying intact, so how the code reads is if you touch it, you have to bring it to code, but we're not touching the wiring, not doing anything, just adding sheet rock, that's it. So, uh, so there, there is no changes that are going to happen, so that doesn't change any of the use group, it doesn't change anything.
I just don't want to pull the string on the sweater, now I'll also
Oh, I, I know exactly what you're saying, yeah, so, um, so that's what we're, we're looking at here, um, there has been nothing, uh, we had some other issues that we were addressing with the building inspector on the, the steel and the ceiling, that issue is, is done away with, because we're not putting plywood up there, we are just sealing everything with sheet rock, all the plaster is being removed, so there's no hazard now of anything falling down through the ceilings, anything like that. These two rooms for thirty-three thousand dollars, I think would be less than a lease a year to, to find places for these other individuals.
So this comes down to minimally, what we need to do for employee and health, safety and wel, health, safety and wellness?
Correct.
And then keep the existing operation of those offices.
Correct.
That's it.
And no public access.
No public access.
So, and what I'll do is, I will make sure that once everything is complete, uh, the door is key access only by the employees, so no public can just walk in, so you have to, uh, like what we have set up with the library for off-hours, nobody can get in there, it should turn the key, and when you turn the key back to get in there, it automatically locks the door.
And if we delay this, because maybe material costs might come down over time, doubtful, we just kind of have costs on the window anyways, for
Yeah, I mean, we, we already have monthly costs that are going now, so, I agree with you, I want to get this thing going, get it out to bid, get the numbers back, and just start moving forward.
Okay.
You know, uh, Tom has secured the, the lease, so that is moving forward, so as long as we can get this out to bid on time, hopefully, uh, mid-October to early November, we can hopefully get this started.
Any further questions with Pat, or with Tom?
I have just one, what if we hire a handicapped employee?
Then we will have to make accommodations for them, uh, on the town floor. Uh, Tom and I have already addressed this issue, we already have some ideas of what rooms we could switch over if we had to, uh, and we just have to move forward from there, if that bridge get crossed, we're, we're ready for it.
Good questions, well, any further questions? Is there a motion to accept the plan as presented?
Motion to accept the plan as presented.
Motion second, any further discussion? Aaron Dunn on the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, three yes, one no. Um, Pat, thank you for the great work and detail on this.
Okay.
Your explanation type was, was very well presented, at least for myself, I feel the program is maybe the same, but very well presented, thank you, Pat.
Okay, thank you.
And welcome back to the team.
Thanks.
All right, we had a long night here, gents, um, is there anything that we can move from our agenda, or do we want to keep on plugging and chugging here?
We can move, we can remove the next item from the agenda.
Okay, well, table for our next meeting, the options for historical commission space?
Yeah.
Your motion to table?
Motion second to table, all in favor?
Aye. All right, special Tom Eaton, Mark?
Uh, I think this can go really quickly.
Yeah.
The first, there are two items to be added to the operating budget, one of them is for the transfer station expenses, as explained earlier, we need to appropriate the money even if, even though we're getting it back in revenue. And also, uh, an estimate of six thousand one hundred fifty dollars it back in revenue. And also, uh, an estimate of six thousand one hundred fifty dollars for, uh, appraisal of the Barden property. Uh, the wording has been refined since you saw it last. It's more specific now.
I got a quick question about this. The assessors have a, a value placed on that property. It's under about thirty thousand. The select board, when they voted to put this property up for sale, established a price of one thousand dollars per acre or a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. If this appraiser that you're going to hire now comes in with a price of, say, uh, assessors got an appraiser of thirty thousand, comes in with a price of forty thousand, and the board feels as though, obviously we feel about this way because we, uh, voted to put out the bid for a thousand dollars an acre, this very board, same members, we would feel unanimously. What will we do then with the price for the assessors? I mean, for the appraiser?
Uh, we, we can set a minimum bid. Um, what we can't do is sell it for anything lower than it's appraised for. And, um, the assessor, or the principal assessor at least, felt that we should have it appraised rather than going by the assessed value. Um, the, the law reads it has to be done.
Do you agree with that? No problem at all. But we got the flex, this board will have the flexibility.
To set a minimum price.
Said whether it agrees with the appraiser or not.
Yeah.
So I wanna.
We just can't sell it for.
He's not gonna be the final word.
Yeah. No.
We can't sell it for less than the appraised value.
Right.
If we go higher, it'll be appraised value.
Yes.
Okay.
And, I mean, we, we have to have it appraised anyway. And I, 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 I wanna just take, take back my, my secure statement of what we can actually charge for it. Um, but I have been led to believe that we can set a high minimum price for it.
Okay.
By town council.
And what's the plan now? Are we, uh, going towards a public auction or a request or proposal with just a stated price and we can accept a proposal that we think is best fits the town?
It, it'll be an invitation for bids, um, that, where we take the highest price. And we, we set a minimum price and we take the highest price bid.
Well, we shouldn't have to. I mean, we probably wanna take a bid that we feel best suits the community.
I can circulate a draft invitation for bids and we can put in any quality requirements that we want for what we think best suits the interests of the community. You could require that it be farmed, farmed organically. You could make any, any kind of quality requirement you want.
Aye.
If, so the board would have to agree on the quality requirements and that becomes part of the invitation for bids.
Awesome, Boyle. But if people respond to this, whatever criteria is, they send in, you're, you're saying they're gonna send in a letter or a proposal with a stated price on it. So they only have a, one opportunity to bid?
Yes. That's the way the invitation for bids works. So people who.
As opposed to an auction?
Right.
I'm sure you're crazy about this. I've been thinking over. All right. Thank you, Tom. Just talk to the information.
And, and, um, we, we would need the, uh, we'd need the appraisal to, to have it be auctioned off either.
Yeah. And you could set a minimum at, you could set a minimum at an auction.
It, it's conceivable we can, we, we could auction it off. I can ask about that.
So while we, uh, we have the town warrant, we'll agree that we need to have the appraisal and then we'll figure out strategy next step after that.
Yep.
And the, um, well, and, and the warrant doesn't include any of this, any of these numbers anyway.
No.
It's just saying we're gonna vote on that. The second one is voting on the borrowing for, for a town meeting. But with the, with the board's acceptance of the proposal, I can now finalize that number. And then the article three is, uh, adding the extra money for, for the engineering for the division road bid that came in. It came in a hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred dollars more than the eight hundred thousand we'd already, um, wanted to borrow. But, um, the, the, the plan here is to get the money from the general stabilization account to supplement the borrowing because the original borrowing was a debt exclusion, which would require a subsequent ballot vote, um, which would throw the town clerk's office into a fit because they're in the middle of two elections, the primaries and the general elections. And this would have to be a separate election with separate registration, early voting, um, cards. So it's not like they can just tag it, tack it on to the, uh, the state ballot. And, um.
And we need that because of.
And it's, it's still a two-thirds vote. So it's not as though it's an easier way to get the money. If we wanted to have it be borrowed, we could take care of that at, um, at the annual town meeting. But I know that, uh, at least the finance committee chair is, uh, in favor of supplementing borrowing with stabilization funds when possible. So he would also be in favor of this. I'm not sure about the finance committee as a whole.
Tom, were you supposed to sign something?
Yeah, the warrant. Yeah.
Uh, once you, once you vote to approve the warrant, then you can sign it.
Do you have a motion to approve the warrant as presented?
Make a motion to approve the warrant as presented.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hear none on the favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. And everybody sign with the same pen, please. Yeah.
Make a motion, table eighteen.
Okay.
And nineteen.
The motion will be table eighteen, nineteen to our next meeting. Is there a second? Okay. All in favor?
How about twenty, twenty-one? Why don't we, uh, table M two?
Uh, Tom.
We go straight to executive session.
Is there, um, oh, yeah, we're still there. Thank you. I completely forgot exec session. Tom, on that question about that house issue, is that town manager update or is that exec session? I did, I lost track of where to end.
Um, we, we, we have it under executive session.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Is there anything critical in your town manager update they verbally need?
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, Boyle. They verbally need to tell us tonight or is it something we can just?
Um, very quickly, there's now a police regionalization page on the website with material that we're gonna populate as we go along. Um, I'm continuing, uh, there's great news about, there's great procurement news, very exciting. Uh, it turns out that for revenue replacement funds now, as of Friday's guidance from treasury, I don't need to do federal procurement rules. I can just go with state procurement rules, which is huge news for me. It may mean nothing, but.
Well, you're happy we're out.
It takes a lot of weight off my shoulders. So that's great. Um, working on other stuff I'll tell you about later. I can skip that, but talked about the mattress grant. Um, uh, over the next year, I hope to review the current salaries and benefits policies document to turn it into a more complete employee handbook, consistent with best practices, and we'll keep you updated as we work toward your eventual approval of that document. Uh, and just finally, uh, you may, you may have signed up for emergency messages. Uh, we are in a stage two drought. Um, outside water use is prohibited in general. Uh, but on alternate days, before seven in the morning and after seven in the evening, you may water your garden, gardens and lawns with a handheld hose, no sprinklers. Uh, written notice for first offense, fifty dollars for the second and three hundred dollars for subsequent offenses. Uh, the drought is getting serious and the water department has issued this emergency order. So that's it.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Any questions for Tom? Okay. So the table, future agendas, I'm assuming I'm having right now. Please email what you do. Um, just quick check, any items anticipated forty hours before the meeting? Uh, remarks of the select board? Real quick, I'd like to, uh, thank, um, Chief Drought, all the police, police officers, fire department, all the volunteers, uh, everybody who participated in the national night out. That was a fabulous event and, uh, great attendance by the community. And, um, I think we have a, a new annual event that we should, uh, consider planning every year. I thought it was just fantastic. And, you know, those hot dogs were delicious, but I think I had one too many.
Good.
Um, any other remarks of the select board? Oh, one more. Support the Lions Club Golf event this Saturday. There you go.
Get out of the way here, trust me.
Yep. Um, any other remarks of the select board? Okay, hear none. Uh, announcements, annual car permits, bag stickers, recycling, only car permits are available for purchase at the transfer station and on the town's website. The town Dalton currently has the following job opportunities: a highway mechanic, a recording secretary, assistant town clerk, building and grounds assistant. If interested, please visit the town's website or call the town manager's office for more information. There are numerous committees and boards with vacancies. Please see the town website for more information or reach out to the town manager's office. Next meeting is scheduled to take place on Monday, September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M. at the senior center with an option for remote participation. And our special town meeting is on?
August twenty-ninth.
August twenty-ninth, seven P M. At?
Wacona.
Wacona. Thank you. Um, and I'd like to have a motion to move to executive session and not to return to open session.
Make a motion, return to, uh, go to executive session, not return to open session. Reason number seven to comply with or act under the authority of any general or specific law or federal grant aid requirements considered prior.
And for reason number three, to consider matters of litigation if the chair determines that discussion under open session would be detrimental to negotiation.
So agreed. Yeah.
Thank you.
Second to go to executive session. All in favor?
Roll call.
A roll call. Thank you, Mark.
Joe Denver.
Yes.
Trevor Bishop.
Yes.
Mark Schott.
Yes.
John Gwael.
Yes. Excellent. We are adjourned and thank you Dalton and thank you to the wonderful Dalton Community TV for sticking with us tonight. So, thank you.